At Council of Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council of Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council of Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
...landscaping areas all in front of the facade so that that's not to cut dry hard concrete. One area in particular that I like to, I like is this landscaped plaza. You've seen the overall, the overall site plan. The numbers will allow for safe access to the building by families and also to get some more landscaping to build on this site. We're doing this, this raised sidewalk area and that plaza kind of anchors that. This is the entrance to our building. I would say that this overall is kind of the base of our, of Fieldhouse in Council of Locks. I don't think there's anything else that I want to point out. I guess I can open up for questions. Doug and I, do you have anything right now? If you have any questions about the facility.
Just, is there going to be a covered walkway then from the Fieldhouse to the hotel?
That's not our intention right now. It's been discussed several times. One of the things that, that we have to maintain is access to the block around the entire building. This, this paved pedestrian way won't be rated for a fire truck passover. The way we're going to be controlling, I think your access by the fire department are removable ballers. The fire department will have access to those via a box on the building. A covered walkway is obviously going to obstruct that, that access. We think we may have a solution to that. It's just, it's just a question of is it going to be put in and what it's going to end up looking like because you have to put a whole fire truck through there. Is it worth that addition?
Okay, thank you.
So is that the same for the hotel or you don't have anything to do with the hotel part of it?
We do and...
Is that going to connect to the Mid-America Center?
Yes. Yes, there's going to be a covered walkway from the hotel to the facility.
Because in those pictures, it doesn't look like it. So those are just not quite right.
That's the grid that we have at the hotel. The piece with the hotel is still in flux back and forth. So we're still working on that agreement. Anything else regarding the Fieldhouse?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted, Pete Tulipan, Iowa West Foundation, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the parking. We talked with you about parking last time you met and a couple of things that we've done in the interim. And I believe, and Don, I think you can confirm this, all of the planning committee recommendations that have been, that were made as a result of the Planning Commission, I mean, we've addressed with the exception of the parking issue. And the Planning Commission asked us to do a parking study, which we have not done, but we have done some additional due diligence about parking down there and two things that we've done. The first and the most important is we've had a lot of conversations with Beau Gidry of Horseshoe. And Beau has agreed, and here it is in writing...
I only have one copy, so...
Just pass it around.
And I want it back.
[laughing].
That the 600-stall parking lot that is outside, not the garage of Horseshoe, we have, through the Fieldhouse or for whatever purpose, he has said we can have total use for that for any overflow parking and can direct people to park there. So that's an additional 600 stalls that are available if we do have a parking issue down there that I think, we believe can mitigate some potential parking. Now, we didn't have that information when we talked to the planning. As a matter of fact, I just got that the last couple of days. The other thing that we did was we went back through all of the events and the numbers of people who were attending the events at the Mid-America Center. And there are a couple of large events that happen down there on an annual basis. The Shrine Circus is a good example, lots of different performances and lots of big crowds. And there were a couple of others that were good size. The vast, and I know you guys know this because I know you get this information, but the vast majority of the events that are held down there are under 1,000 people. So that means 500 cars. There, then there's a few events that are in that 2,000 to 2,500 and that means maybe 1,000 cars. So there are a couple, the Shrine Circus being one and Monster Jam. And I don't know if that, I don't, I didn't get a chance to check out whether or not that was one event or that was several events and the number they have on here was several events. So we feel very confident that to start off and that not, we're not saying that this is the, the long-term, addresses any potential long-term, but we feel confident with the additional 600 stalls, with the potential for the land that you all own next to Bass Pro to be made into a parking lot. If we run into a parking issue, we, the Iowa West Foundation, are committed to working with you to try to resolve that. And the casinos are as well, or Beau is as well.
Pete, just real quick, on the email from Beau, it says that their lot can be used for overflow from the Fieldhouse. Would they agree too though that if there was an event at the Fieldhouse and an event at the arena, it would be for arena or Fieldhouse overflow?
Yeah, I think that's just semantics. I think he, he basically said, "We'll do whatever you want. You can use it however you need to use it." So if you want me to, I'll have him redo that and say, "It's for any event that happens down there."
That would be good.
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
And he'll, he's, he's very cooperative. He really, I think, wants this to happen as well. He sees it as advantageous for their business as well, potentially.
Other questions for Pete? Other questions for anybody in light of what Pete said? All right. Thank you. We're going to review the agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to engage in discussion on?
I spoke with Mr. Wade about item 5G. It's apparently phrased as, I think it's phrased as a repeal of the ordinance when in fact it's an amendment of the ordinance.
Consent agenda? Anything on the consent agenda?
Yeah, that's...
5G?
But that involves approval of the agenda.
Oh, I got you. All right.
Yep. So that, that would be modifying.
Yep, yep, yep. Do we have that noted? Okay. Anything on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
On, for A, the attached letter from the architect appears to relate to Phase 3, though the public hearing, excuse me, Phase 2, but the public hearing's about Phase 3. Should that letter not be there? I couldn't figure out how it related to Phase 3. Or I'm missing something. It's page 40 of 255.
So there is a letter in the packet attached to the resolution referencing Phase 2.
Yes, it's dated January 4th from Dan, and apologies for his, Dollazelle, to Larry Foster. Is that, excuse me?
I think, I think, well...
Does it, does it go with the other? I figured as much, but I didn't want to assume because if it were out of order then I'm, or not, I'm...
It's in the wrong place. Larry's on 8E.
It's just in the wrong spot.
I, I thought maybe, but I thought maybe there was some correlation there that I was missing.
Oh, it should not be part of that...
Okay.
It's left in the master.
Okay. Just a clarification, thank you.
Other questions on the public hearing?
On, oh...
Please.
Did you have one before 4E?
Yeah, I kind of had one that kind of went in tandem with both 4B and, and 5A, if I might mash those two together. We're, we're taking up a question of not only the amendment of the urban renewal district, also the TIF district. And so, so if the amendment in the TIF district goes through, Mr. Gross, and for some reason this project falls through for one reason or another, then we will have already modified the TIF and the urban renewal plan. Will that put us at a disadvantage? Will that, is that something that can be easily rectified, Dick? Saying is, is that, we will already set things in motion that would then have to be potentially undone?
Well, what you have is actually two actions on that. The first is 4B is a planning document that was required by state law. You approve by resolution.
Right.
I don't see any harm in actually approving that at this meeting. The other one is the ordinance, which is first consideration, and then you would have several other considerations of that. By the time we get to third and final consideration, we should be close to having a development agreement on your desk.
Okay, good.
For you to review. So we would have kind of this grand finale of all these actions. We may have to extend a fourth consideration of this particular ordinance because what we essentially have to do is carve out a donut hole out of the existing TIF. And then at the next meeting, you're going to get a new urban renewal area for the area we're carving out.
Right.
So that's delayed two weeks. So the ordinance is also, will be delayed two weeks. So when we get to, you know, in February, we're either going to have to waive the third and final consideration of the new ordinance, which you can, or probably have a fourth and final consideration of the ordinance tonight. And that way they'll, they'll, they'll both coincide with the develop agreement. Unless we have a develop agreement in the first meeting of February. I'm not exactly sure when that is scheduled.
Okay. Well, that's going to be an important milestone. So I just wanted to make sure, I understand that a lot of these things have to be done in advance in order to set the stage.
Yes.
So, understand. Thank you.
Nate, did you have a question?
Yeah, on 4E, the Neighborhood Works Home Solution one, if I remember correctly, this is the one where a home will be built for a veteran. I just sought clarification that it, they asked, Neighborhood Works, that is, asked for it to be forgivable, all but a small amount of the purchase price over time. And I wasn't, as phrased, I wasn't sure if it's recommended we accept that or not. The forgivable nature of all but a de minimis amount of it. It is the recommendation to accept the forgivable...
Yes.
...loan nature of it. I, I thought perhaps, but I wasn't sure it quite said that.
The way we wrote it is the city, you know, would sell the property for $9,000 in the resolution and that the city would then finance that $9,000 up to two years.
I see.
That gives them two years to build a single-family home at which time we could forgive it.
I see. Okay.
And while I'm here is I've asked both Bill Perdue and I've asked Neighborhood Works to be in communication with you because you may have some other questions. You know, I hope they come in tonight. If they don't, I don't know what that, you know, does with your, you know, disposition of this. You know, there are, if there are concerns with this, I think there are several options you could do. One, you could delay action for another couple of weeks and ask them to attend and give you the specific, the specifics of this deal. Or that you could put some other specifics in here if you so desire. I mean, you know, obviously you'd want it sold for a veteran.
Sure.
I would assume you'd want it sold for a disabled veteran. But is there a percentage on that? Is that somebody completely disabled? Partially disabled? Do you wish to put an income requirement on it? You know, you know, do you want to put a limit on the home value? I mean, those are all things that you could, could do to kind of protect the city. And if you want to do that, you could then pass that and, and direct us administratively to make that happen. So, you know, we're open to that.
I, I had a discussion with Neighborhood Works about this particular proposal and they, they seemed very open to working with the, with the city and they wanted to take a very go so, go slow cautious approach themselves to make sure that they had properly vetted either that this prospective owner, the occupant, as well as a process for doing future projects. So they at least sounded like that they wanted to be very responsible in that this was not a showstopper, that this was something that they wanted as an additional incentive if possible and wanted to work to show good faith as much as possible.
And I was speaking with Mr. Perdue earlier today and he, he had mentioned that there was some reference to potentially having a 10-year requirement as between the veteran and Neighborhood Works so that no balloon payment, but a 10-year, 10% per year forgivable so that we avoid any concern over...
Yeah, and I think the problem of this resolution that you have before you is, is that we do not have, I think we have a lot of good intents, but we don't have those things down in a sheet of paper that everybody is reading them kind of the same, same sheet of music and that we all know what we're trying to achieve here.
We could have it maybe before the public hearing?
Well, we'll see what, you know, they say tonight. You know, I guess it's to your comfort level. There could be, you know, an approval and then you give them 60 days to come up with a, you know, a written strategy that at least you see and you can understand whether or not that is keeping with what you thought you were approving. Something like that too. You know, it's...
Yeah, I don't think they were, they were looking for a condition precedent.
No, I don't think so. No, that sounds reasonable.
Other questions on the public hearings? Anything on ordinances on first consideration?
Does anyone have anything before 5C? On that one, I didn't know if WOW Enterprises or their attorney is here, but I had a question. Let me see, bear with me a moment. I didn't know if the applicant was agreeable or not to the recommendation to zone at I-1 as opposed to I-2 and then they're having to get a conditional use permit to avoid some of the concerns expressed by staff. Do you happen to know?
I think at the planning commission, I think they spoke kind of that they would prefer the I-2.
Sure.
And I would guess that they will attend the public hearing.
I would imagine.
What I would imagine, so.
Okay.
Just for your information.
Oh. Oh, all right, all right. Thank you.
Other questions for ordinances under first consideration?
Just to clarify again on 5, 5G, that the staff communication provides the essence of the, of the ordinance change. There wasn't a formal ordinance draft put into the package. I contacted Mr. Wade about that and he felt that, that wouldn't be an issue that once this is advanced to second reading, if it is, then, then he would supply that, that draft. Would it essentially mirror the text of this anyway? So...
I had, I had several, not several, but I get three questions in regards to that issue. Well, and every year we're going to do this on February 22nd, which is like the meeting before we present the budget. So that's going to make it a little tough for the city to figure out, you know, we will have gone through the budget process and all of a sudden you're going to make decisions that'll take revenue out of the budget the week before we present the budget. So is there a better time of year to do that rather than a February 22nd date? It says that the city will prepare a list of designated areas and submit same to the council for approval on an annual basis, but doesn't give any criteria on, on how we prepare that list or, or on what constitutes a designated area, what doesn't constitute a designated area. And so that makes it a little tough to prepare a list that, that maybe you're happy with or unhappy with. And then...
It wasn't a mirror.
Thank goodness.
I'm curious, it would appear that, that we want monitoring with no revenue. Is that the assumption? It says the administrative authority is authorized to mark and cause to be marked individual parking spaces, set time limits for said spaces in the parking meter zones, said parking spaces to be designated and approved by painted lines and durably marked on the curbing or surface of the street of pavement. So just trying to figure out if...
Sure.
If we're gonna pay personnel with no revenue to pay them. And then where's that, where am I supposed to get that money from?
Well, with respect to, to the second question about the designation of the zones, the current ordinance as it now exists provides that your administrative authority has already designated those zones and has them available to the public for review. So I pick up from that that those zones already exist and can be, and can be looked at or reviewed.
Is that the case, Dick? I'm not familiar with any zones.
That is, that's what the, is actually in the code. I'm not sure if Public Works has actually had those zones established or not.
I've lived here for 60 years and those meters have been there all those 60 years and I assume predated me. So I didn't do anything.
No, I don't, I don't know if we comply with what it says a zone. We have areas that we track. And they're, and we track basically, we have every parking lot, I guess you could say is a zone. And then on-street parking is our other category that we track. But we, we have multiple lots that I would present as a zone. And then currently we track everything on-street as a single zone. My thought is, response to this request would be that we would list on-street parking by block. And so every block would become a zone.
Okay.
I mean, that was my anticipation.
Sure, yeah. No, I think that's certainly a basis to, to begin, sure. I understand.
What public lots do we have left metered besides Vine Street? Since the TS Bank went up, I was trying to think...
We have Scott Street, we have the library, we have Vine Street. Those are our three lots.
Scott, Vine, and Library, okay.
Yes. Got another one, but Trainer State Bank project eliminated the Beano Lot.
And just with respect to, to the mayor's third question, that, that verbiage that he cited again comes out of the code section that currently exists in there. So we're, so we're not modifying that portion of the code. The, the intent behind this, as, as stated in the amendment, is to provide a process by which business owners and residents in the area can come to the council on an annual basis and, and have these zones reviewed with an eye towards either continuing them as metered zones or, or the potential of discontinuing them. There's, there's nothing in this, in this amendment that in any way envisions doing away with, with all the, all the zones or all the meters. As a matter of fact, that...
The special interest zones or meters, is that what you're talking about?
Well, in front of certain small businesses that have requested that some sort of review take, take place. And at least that's, that provides the process for these businesses and residents to, to come to the council and, and make their, you know, their, their positions known and ask for, and ask for appropriate action on an annual basis.
And it wasn't the language so much, but the fact that you're still requiring some monitoring without equipment or ability to monitor them because you haven't changed that language is exactly what my question, the root of my question is.
Well, but that, that language goes to metered zones. And, and certainly if, if the city wants to monitor an un-metered area for purposes of parking compliance, it may certainly still do so. We're saying that, that, that any area that is, that should not be marked off or, or metered unless it's approved as a zone.
So if an area is not metered, there wouldn't be a case like they're doing in, I don't know, Dubuque where they have two-hour parking, we have to send somebody around and chalk the tires and stuff. That's not what would the intent there is. It's if it's not a metered area, the city's not going to be required to monitor it.
Would certainly be, be at liberty to enforce parking regulations like in, in any other place, it's just that it wouldn't be a metered, a metered space.
Be it liberty to or be required to.
Like we're on the streets now, like you have someone that's going to report, like, you know, car's been here for two days or you would have that sort of thing, I would imagine.
Similar to like in front of residents, you mean?
Correct.
But if there's no meter, what difference does it make? I mean, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out is, you're going to allow someone to park there without monitoring the parking or you're going to want me to monitor the parking without some revenue supporting the monitor of the parking? This, this language says that I should set time limits, I being the city, should set time limits for parking and enforce those. And so without the meter, I don't know how I accurately measure those time limits. And if there is no meter, if someone's there for three or four days, is that a violation? You know?
Well, I'm, I'm reading this as the paragraph, the first paragraph that's proposed language says where there are meters, those times will be designated. Second paragraph specifically states if it's not a zone to be metered, it will not be enforced.
Yeah, as a metered zone.
It didn't say may not be enforced, it says it will not be enforced.
Right. The same rules would apply that apply anywhere, like in a residential neighborhood. You're not allowed...
Which I believe is 24 hours. I believe...
Right.
So here... On-street parking in any location the city is...
So that's how you're reading it and here's how I read it. "We will delineate marking parking meter zones, period." And you're saying we're going to do that every block. And then it says, "The administrative authority is authorized to mark or have marked off individual parking spaces and set time limits for said spaces in parking meter zones." And so every zone is a zone, said marking, said parking meter spaces are to be designated and approved by lines painted and durably marked. And so it's telling me to set limits even though there isn't going to be a parking meter there because it is in an official parking meter zone that's annually either added or deleted.
It isn't worded clearest, no. I mean, what you're saying doesn't make sense to...
The clauses could be worded a bit differently.
But the second paragraph then goes on to state, "If there are no meters, there will be no enforcement of any parking."
Correct. Saying if it's not an approved zone, don't put a parking meter there.
Right, I think Matt's point though is, if it doesn't have meters, then it's not in the zone anymore.
Clarification I want is, are you going to come back and say, "Even though there's no meters there, I want you to chalk a tire and have an employee walk the street and make sure that that car..." You set a two-hour time limit, you chalk the tire, and you come back every two hours, which would be more regularly than what they're there today, and, and make them move their car.
No, I, I think that's entirely...
And then if they park there three days, I, I still don't have to make them move their car then.
I think that's entirely up to you and the police chief, you know, how you think it's, you best enforce the, the traffic and the congestion for that area.
No, it's, apparently that's not the case. It's up to you. So I want you, if you're going to take the authority, you take the authority and you do it.
Well, let me share my thoughts on this. First of all...
Because that's what you said in the paper, that, that I'm setting the spaces and you want to take it away and put it in the people's hands. So now you're saying you want me to do it? I don't know. I'm confused.
So am I. I didn't read that in the paper, but...
Well, you, they quoted... Well, you, they quoted you. I don't know who they were quoting, but.
Well, Dubuque did not remove their parking meters. In fact, they're in the process of adding more meters. So I'm, Dubuque's misidentified because they're not a city that's removed their, their parking.
Correct.
Newton, Newton hasn't had parking meters downtown. I tried to find somebody who remembered. It's, it's been decades since they've had parking meters in their downtown on-street. What they had was parking meters in their parking lots. And those meters were the old mechanical type and they were ten cents an hour. And because people had free parking in front of the stores, nobody was using the parking lot. So it made no sense to even have meters in their parking lots if the parking on the street was free. They also thought about upgrading their meters. I mean, you can't, it would cost them more to find the mechanical workings to change their ten cent per hour fee to a, it was, it was cheaper to buy a mechanic, a newer digital meter. And they just decided, they didn't want that expense. So in general, you know, the purpose of meters is to balance the needs of all the users.
Yep.
And you have short-term needs, customers, and you have long-term needs, which are employees and, and residents. And so the whole idea is to make sure that, try and the best you can to balance everybody's needs. So what we've done is we've, we've put two-hour meters in places that have customers. And we pushed our ten-hour meters to the, the periphery of the downtown. They have a little further walk, but they're not consuming the, the more convenient stalls that we hope people with money want to find a place to spend it. So that's the whole basis of the program. It's, it, I can tell you by experience that it's, it's an extraordinarily difficult balance because everyone's needs are unique.
Yep.
And over the years, I've had dozens and dozens of requests from people who want their special circumstance accommodated somehow in the metering. You know, they don't like the idea of, of the people next door parking in front of theirs. I mean, if, if, from the public perspective, the ideal thing would be every spot in front of your business would be your parking spot. But that's impractical.
Yeah.
You know, it's not gonna work. So I want to caution you that one thing I've learned is that change is not good. Everybody, as bad as the existing system is, its status quo, it's a balance. When you start making changes, then it kind of opens up the door and everybody wants changes.
Yep. And, and as you pointed out, it is indeed a balance. And, and that's why we wanted to create some sort of process where individuals could at least come in and, and, and make their case. For instance, I contacted Scott Belt with some hypotheticals. I said, okay, if, if meters were removed around the perimeter of the courthouse, what would that hypothetically do to the courthouse? And, and, and you could almost feel the shivers going through the phone line saying, well, it's that, that he would have real concerns about how that would affect people needing parking, say for jury duty and, and ordinary staff parking and whatnot. And I thought, you know, those are, those are very valid concerns. There are a lot of high-rise apartments around here that we could conceivably create a lot of problems for if we don't go about getting the right level of input for this. And, and at the same time, there are other areas where, where perhaps there are different interests and issues impacting residents and, and business owners. So, so that was kind of the intent, is to get some sort of discussion going.
High-rises. And I guess if, if you're talking about the Hunter Block, we've got the new Sawyer Building. We've got thirty-some units, probably forty-five residents or forty-five vehicles associated with those residents because some would have two people in there with two vehicles. They are thirty feet away, so is thirty feet away not a high-rise issue? We've got the, the Old Chieftain Hotel downtown. We've got, I mean, in all these zones, the reason we have parking meters, as I tried to explain in the paper, is to turn over the parking spaces. There is no doubt in my mind that occasionally there will be somebody that comes to a business during eight to five when the meters are active and, and fumbles for change, finds out they don't have it and go somewhere else. I, I doubt that people make a buying decision based on putting a quarter in the meter. They may make a buying decision based on the fact they don't have a convenient quarter to put in the meter. But I think that, that if you take away those parking places, you're gonna have the employees park there. The residents at, at the Sawyer Building pay thirty dollars a month to park in the Sawyer Building. They're never gonna pay thirty bucks a month again. They're gonna park on Broadway. There will not be any parking available. The city of Omaha just changed their ordinance because there was no parking available after five o'clock. And, and so you're gonna get a situation that's gonna get a lot worse rather than a lot better by eliminating parking. And, and I just, and so when you eliminate that, and I don't have income to pay somebody, I gotta lay some people off. I gotta lay off a parking meter attendant. I gotta lay off the person that, that empties the meters if there isn't enough money to pay them. And so there'll be no enforcement anywhere downtown. And so when there's a funeral, no one can park at the funeral home. City employees will begin to park around the streets. County employees will begin to talk, park around the streets and not in the parking lots. And, and so while in theory it sounds great, in general practice, as Dan Kenny once said, we don't have a parking issue, we got a walking issue. Americans are gonna park as close to their point of departure as, as they can and, and that will cannibalize all the convenient parking. That person who wants to go to a particular restaurant won't go. Do you make a, a difference between Dunkin's and Main Street Cafe? Do you allow the people at Dunkin's say they really want to have free parking because it will help their business? But the Main Street Cafe is next to the Chieftain Hotel. And you say, no, we take away their parking. We leave the parking there. It's too close to the Chieftain Hotel. You know, it's, it's, it's just a tough, and we won't ever pick up enough revenue to pay for those people. You know, in theory, you can say, well, we're gonna pick up some sales tax, but that isn't true. It, it cannibalizes sales tax from somewhere else. Someone who is gonna eat at Dunkin's will now eat at Porta Biarda and, and will still get that same sales tax. And so I really struggle with this. As you can tell, I think that it's an issue that we're creating a problem where there isn't an issue today in making a significant potential future problem that is gonna be difficult to correct.
Could ask them and I'm.
Go ahead. I've got questions. A few years.
Sure. I, I have just, I have a few questions. The first is, is the intent, excuse me, of the effective date of, of, of the first report due by February twenty-two of this year, is, is that to establish a start date and then leave it to the administration STO when annually thereafter it occurs? Or is the intent to have it occur on February twenty-second of every year, which, which is?
No, that was intended as a, as a start date.
Okay.
Yeah.
When.
A start date to have it occur every year at that same time?
It says clearly here, taking place no later than the Feb-, oh, February twenty-second of twenty sixteen.
I, I took that to mean an effective, but I, but it raises a very good point. I took it to mean that was when the first one had to start. As written, it appears, correct me if I'm mistaken, but as written, it appears that then annually thereafter would be entirely presumably at the discretion of the mayoral branch because you haven't said when.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we just want, wanted to establish a, an annual review.
Is that effective date? Okay.
Because we, we understand, you know, that there's gonna be things that may come up on the schedule that.
Sure.
May take precedence.
Sure. And, and presumably annual, would that mean similar to say the State of the Union? That's now modern tradition, I guess. Annually, it's not literally the same three-hundred-sixty-five days, the intent?
Correct. Yeah. It just provides then a, then a, an expectation amongst business owners and residents that there would be an opportunity at some point during the calendar year to come in and make a case.
Is the intent, if, if parking areas are, let's say by block, because I think that's a good frame of reference to, if nothing else to start with, I wasn't sure how to start with it either. If it's that, I, I thought, I understood it to, to read that it wouldn't be that if, if I want my business to not have parking in front of it, that it would just apply to mine, but the one next to me, it would not, they wouldn't get the break without, that is, not have a meter in front of it. Or, excuse me, that I wouldn't, if I wanted to have a meter removed in front of my business, would, would that apply to that whole zone, that block in our example? Or would it truly be that meters would be sporadic between buildings within? Let's, let's pick the Hunter Block. Maybe that's an easy example. Would it mean that all the part, if that were a zone, which in your example and probably common sense, it probably is a zone, just for sake of argument if nothing else? If, if that's a zone, would it be the, is it your intent that parking meters would be in some places there? Depending on who requested it and then for who, who got it approved or not? Or would it be all or nothing? That part I'm struggling to understand.
All or nothing is what I understood. Yeah.
Yeah, for that particular zone. Now, that's why I think Mr. Reader's suggestion of doing this on a block-by-block basis is probably the most conservative way to, to approach this. I, I think it'd really be opening up a can of worms if, if you had, say, a block where there would be zones in front of some businesses on the block.
And that was one of my concerns. I think that would be completely unworkable. And I wondered if that's where you were going.
So then does majority rule? I mean, if six businesses want it and five businesses don't, you just say, we don't care about your business and your other five businesses and go on about your way?
I don't think it's just based on the businesses' wants. I think part of it is that it allows us to hear from Greg, from police, from, you know, whoever's being impacted by this.
You're gonna hear from them. If you wanna hear from them, they're more willing to talk to you today.
And that's what we want. I mean, it gives the, you know, whoever it is requesting, it gives them a chance to come and say, here's why, you know, here's our cases, why we think it should be. And then we also get to hear the other side of this is why it shouldn't be. And then as a council, you make the, you know, the decision of, okay, balancing out both, both requests, what's, what's better for the city as a whole?
It's hard. I'm afraid that somebody's gonna be mad either way. You know, it's not gonna be any different because I'm probably gonna have a handful of people who are gonna want the meters, handful aren't. Somebody's gonna come out mad every year. And then it's gonna be every year. So people are gonna be mad every year. Because there's, you can't, we all know that. You can't make everybody happy. But I have several questions. If I understood what I read in the paper, I, because one of my questions was that we're gonna put them in, take them out, put them in, take it out. But I, I think in the interview, Councilman Ringenberg was quoted as saying that we would leave the poles, but just remove the meter heads. That way it wouldn't be a big expense, I guess, if you take them out one year, put them in the next year. But my question to Greg would be, I would have big concerns about the safety of that. Do we have to worry about liability with people like running into the, you know, they're hard to see without a meter head? Is that something, is there any regulations on that? I mean, do you guys have to comply with any standard regulations when it comes to just having a meter pole with no meter head on it? Or how does that work?
I'm pretty sure there's not a regulation that says, don't put them, meter posts out without a meter head on it. But, you know, I would think from a pure aesthetic standpoint that you wouldn't want the post sticking out. I mean, they could be there for years, depending on what the changes are. To me, it, it's just an ice ore. So I wouldn't think liability-wise, you know, anytime anything happens, right-of-way, we're exposed to liability. We have defenses, but we still have to contest though, you know?
I ask because I mean, I know that there's, you know, some of the codes you guys go by determines how many stop signs can be in a certain area or how far apart and all that. I just didn't know if that was one of them. I'd like to know more about that because I, I would be concerned. It would look horrible just to have the posts sitting there with nothing on them.
I, I estimated about a hundred dollars to remove a post and it's about a hundred dollars to install a post.
Okay. So every time it went in and out, you're talking, you know, a hundred bucks. So, per post. And then I'm assuming that the two council people that brought this forward probably have got a good bit more research. I didn't try to do because I figured you guys had it. What's the, so let's just say if you took out the parking meters in the Vine Street lot as an example, what's the financial impact to the budget? So like, how many are leased on a monthly basis? And how much money would be lost there? How much was spent actually just expanding that lot? So Greg, how much does it cost right now per parking stall? Do you guys estimate?
These numbers are sure. And the nine to eleven thousand dollar per parking stall.
To build it, nine to eleven thousand. So.
We had hundreds of thousands in acquisition costs for homes less than five years ago and spent hundreds of thousands to build that parking.
I think the last remodel of Vine Street, the last two was five or six hundred thousand total.
Five what?
Five or six hundred thousand, including right-of-way acquisitions.
Five to six hundred thousand. Okay. And then, so anyway, I was wondering, did you guys run some numbers so we could get an idea of what the impact would be? So when we're looking at, we get numbers showing us what the costs are, the meter made and all that, how can I judge what that's gonna mean? Because if we pass this, then it's gonna happen every year. And so then if we do pull an area out, I gotta, I have to kind of have a feel for what that would mean financially.
Sure. I, I think since we're not anywhere close to saying that we think that all the meters ought to go, we're talking about a fairly small number of meters, at least to.
Where would that be at?
To begin with. Well, we don't know. That depends upon the input that we get back from, from the public on that. But, but say for instance, part of the discussion here was about the Vine Street parking or, or other lots of, of that nature. And you could take out individual pockets. The, the numbers that, that Mr. Sandow requested and were supplied come close to the numbers that were supplied in the last budget. And, and when you look at overall meter fees plus parking fines and then you subtract off the, the maintenance and the parking enforcement expenses and then you deduct the, the fees paid to passport parking, then the, the difference between, between revenue and expenses comes out to under twenty-nine thousand dollars per year for, for all meters in the city.
And then that doesn't include lighting the parking lot or snow removal, liability coverage if someone were to slip and fall or have their vehicle damaged. So there are additional expenses.
Or, or capital improvements.
Yeah. I don't see how, you know, I guess it'd just be, my concern is, you know, okay, so we have maybe, do you know how many spots are leased over there? Maybe thirteen, maybe. It's not that many.
There's thirteen in Vine Street.
Thirteen are leased at thirty a month? Do you know what the?
Yeah, I think it's twenty-five or thirty.
Twenty-five or thirty a month. So, you know, that's what my thing is, is what I just want to know is, let's say, you know, just as an example, we take out Vine Street. The exact dollar amount of Vine Street out of the budget, is, are we still gonna be able to cover the expenses of the rest of the city staying in? Because we're making it where you can have it or not have it. So there's a breakpoint. I just wondered if you guys had figured out where's that breakpoint where we have to take the rest of the meters out because there wouldn't be enough income to cover the expense of a meter made and, you know, maintenance and stuff? Do you know what that number is?
Well, like I say, just as of today, the, the difference in, in the break even on the cost versus revenues is under thirty thousand dollars already. So the, so the meters and the enforcement is not generating a lot of revenue to begin with. So, so there's, there's not that much of a cushion as it already exists.
I guess I'm confused. So you said that didn't include, when you were saying those numbers, it didn't include, you said less the maintenance and enforcement, less the passport parking. But right now, we're covering the cost of the enforcement, the parking meter lady, right?
Yeah, just barely.
So if you took out half the meters and council blessed, would you, they'll be able to cover that person's wages? That's my question. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find out, did you guys figure out where the break number is? The twenty-nine thousand's not telling me, I think what I'm trying to figure out. And that's that, I want to know if, let's say on, you know, February, people start coming in and. and let's just say everybody in the Bayless Park area says, "We do not want meters," so pull all those. And everybody on the Hunter Block says, "No meters on Hunter Block, no meters in Vine Street." And so, you know, let's say we remove five hundred meters. What is that number where we have to just go ahead and pull the rest, because there wouldn't be enough income to cover the costs of the remaining ones?
Off the top, I'd say that's not very many meters. But, you know, that's a point of discussion then, that we would be coming up there as to whether or not the council wants to approve these zones, eliminate certain zones. That's a discussion we can certainly have at that point in time. And that would also be an opportunity for the business owners and the residents to discuss, okay, do we want to, do we want to imposition business owners and people who might want to frequent those businesses for purposes of paying for the part-time salary of a enforcement person? I mean, that's a trade-off.
Okay, so we don't really know what, then, see, I'm gonna have a hard time making these decisions on this particular one without a little more information. I'm not, my thing is, is that I just don't have enough information to know what the end result's gonna be, because when we vote on this, we're saying this is absolutely gonna happen. And so, you know, that we're gonna do the review. So every year, every year, we're gonna review, and every year, the layout could change. So it'd be like, are we gonna fire a parking meter made this year, hire another one next year? How are we gonna do that? I'm just trying to make sure I understand financially what the rest of the, you know, the rest of the city's going to be asked to pick up. Because that's what it's gonna be.
Be clear, there's two jobs, the parking meter person who issues the tickets, and the maintenance person who empties the meters. And so it's two jobs gone.
Well, he also maintains the meters and.
Yeah.
All right, so then, I've got several questions. Okay, so on the last paragraph, it says, "Unless the zone is prone to congestion due to the proximity of higher-density structures." So have you guys set out what is gonna reflect a higher density? I need to know that before I know what we're talking about.
And the distance from.
Oh. Due to the proximity of a higher-density structure. So could you guys maybe set out within the ordinance, or set out something within the ordinance that's gonna dictate what that proximity is and what the density is, so that we've got a pretty good idea of what that means? Because I don't know what that means.
You know, I think that this is a judgment call on an ongoing basis. That's part of the annual review process, where then residents and business owners would come in and make that case. To set that, to set that out in advance by distances or by density kind of circumvents the overall intent of this ordinance. And that is to provide individuals with an opportunity to come in and make the case that this is making it difficult for them to operate their businesses or to live in the downtown area. We want to revitalize the downtown area, make it more accessible and more vibrant as a business and a living location. So we just wanna make sure that residents have an opportunity to come in and make that case.
So should we maybe just remove that part? Since, I mean, it's kinda like, we've had these conversations before as a council, that we can't have things, and I think Councilman Ringenberg's been really good to bring those up, that you can't lease.
Words mean something.
Yeah, words mean something. I think that's been one of your really strong points, is we need to set out, when we're setting these out, don't leave these open ends. So if that's the case, and you're not gonna set it out ahead of time, then I would remove the verbiage, because you know we're gonna end up in a position where we're gonna have, you know, ten people in a district saying, "No, you say right here, high-density, now we consider this high-density." I think we're gonna have to remove that verbiage, I don't know how you can leave that in there without specifying what it means. It's just gonna get us all in trouble later, because we're not gonna be able to tell people what it means.
And I don't think that's a showstopper. Again, you know, the point of that sub-paragraph was to set out intent, why we're doing this, and what would enter into the thinking as we go forward. So, yeah, if there's a concern, yeah, I think.
I think you'd have to, I just can't see how we can leave it in there and then have it be so vague. You know, we all know that words mean something, we've got to make sure that we know what we mean when we're voting on it, what this high-density means. Now, I guess I would say this, is that, I mean, if the, what I, the only thing I've gotten back from anybody that read this in the paper, I've been watching the Facebook on Noomperl to see what people's responses are, seen some people saying exactly what everybody knows, if there's no meters, people park there all day. I know that the people that lease spaces in the back, I would have to venture to guess, my husband leases three spots back there. He's not gonna lease any spots anymore, because, like he said, he's parking right in front of his office. He gets there earlier than anybody else, so he will be there all day long. And why wouldn't you? You know, if there's no meter and there's no rules, I'm parking in front of my office. So I have, I really have real concerns that this isn't going to, I think people like Bloomworks, this would hurt them terribly. You know, they've got people that are running in to pick up flowers. You know, if the people that have engineering offices, law offices, are taking all the spots all day, they don't have a back entrance, so it's not, that's not gonna work for them. I think it's gonna cause some really big problems. And so, you know, I don't, I guess I just don't even know how to feel about this one, but if we get more information as far as what you expect the impact on the budget to be, how much are the taxpayers gonna have to pick up of the difference for those districts that want to maintain parking meters for their business? You know, I'm still open to looking at it, but I think it needs to be, honestly, I think it needs to be, it is or it isn't, not a yearly thing. If this is what you believe is best for your business, take 'em out, but don't expect the council to every year, put 'em in, take 'em out. Taxpayers don't deserve that, because you know what? When you're talking about a hundred bucks to take one in, you know, put one in, a hundred bucks to take one out, who have you heard? You know, you've heard the taxpayers, because they're the ones that are gonna pay it. And that's a lot more money than the quarters that are being put in there. So I think that you're either committed or you're not. You know, if you truly believe that this is what your business needs, then be committed to it, and don't leave the opening of every year I get to change my mind, because the rest of the taxpayers don't deserve that, because they're gonna be the ones paying it.
I think perhaps there are two questions here. The first is, there's an existing policy or process, I'm not sure of the right word, in place. So the question is, procedurally, how should it go? And then there's the substantive question of what should the answer be, however it's decided? So I think there are two parts there. I can't pretend to have the answer and to even know fully what I think at this point. But I think there are two questions, so I think perhaps we ought to keep those, keep it in mind and not conflate the two together, because I think that's important. One of my concerns, take the Hunter Block, that's been an example. One of my concerns has been from a taxpayer point of view. We do spend a great deal of money on parking. I appreciate there are areas where you can't build a parking lot, so there's an argument there. But there's also the argument that the vast majority of business owners aren't getting taxidized, taxpayer subsidized, parking either. So if we spend that kind of money in that area, what is to justify continuing to spend that? And then, another practical question, though money certainly is more important than my second point, but there are great, there are a great many business owners and proprietors who spend a great amount of time keeping those areas up. There are some who don't, and, you know, and we run into them, "Why do I have to take care of that?" Well, why do I have to mow the right way in front of my house? Because, first of all, it's my legal obligation, but I think, if I dare say even more importantly, it's my house, I want it to look good, and if it's my business, I'd really want people to go there. And there's some places, I think, I'll speak for myself, there's some places I won't go, because if they won't sweep in front of their business, I'm gonna assume their food's not gonna be something I like, or might make me sick. You know, maybe that's not fair, but I think that's common sense, and I think most people think that way. So one of the concerns I like to think about, and take the Hunter Block, because they're a very nicely organized area of businesses that work together, for the vast most part. One of the things I'd like to understand better is how will this lead to better responsibility-taking for existing duties now, and certainly not make the problem worse? Because we do run into that problem, cigarette butts, for example, or shoveling or sweeping. I don't want people to think, well, these are all, this isn't my responsibility, my customers can park there, but I don't have to sweep, but I don't have to shovel. I don't wanna exacerbate that problem, and I don't pretend to have the answer to that, but it is a concern of mine that I think we should think about. Because there are pluses and minuses here of the taxpayer in general, the people going there in particular, the owners, there are just a lot of competing interests. And I don't, as I sit here, pretend to know the answer. But before we change something substantively, I need to know more about it. And I'm very open to hearing about it, I genuinely am. And then there's that, kind of the threshold procedural question of where best should those decisions be made? And I don't know the answer to that either, as I sit here. But I welcome the discussion, that's just where I'm thinking right now, just so you understand the concerns and questions I have both ways.
I think that's the intent of this, was to be able to have that discussion more in-depth as the certain zones were considered, and maybe every year is, you know, now hearing, kinda somewhere on it, you know, maybe every year's too often, maybe we do it every five years, or, you know, I don't know the exact, maybe we should've done it differently for years. But more so that there was a way to get people where they, you know, people that are always coming to us, you hear, I'm sure, you know, I want this changed. But right now, there's not really, you know, now we could have, they can come, and we can also hear from the public, from the city staff, from everybody. Then you can make a better informed decision, at least they had a chance. Maybe it is that the meter shouldn't be there, maybe they should. I'm not saying there's a definite right or no, it's just, right now, we don't get to hear from everybody, you know, you're hearing one side or.
Is the concern the current, if I may ask, is the current, are you concerned that there's, for lack of a better phrase, due process or a way? Maybe that's too technical, I mean, that's, is the concern that, right now, there's no way that if an area wants to change it, that they can be heard? Is that the concern? And if so, I wonder if that's accurate, I don't know. Is that the concern?
Yeah, I would say that's one of the concerns we've had. I mean, and it's just, you look at other areas, there's Benson, there's Dundee. There's some areas, you know, that don't have any parking meters, and it seems to work great. Then Omaha, you know, just up there, and so it's like, well, what's, you know, kind of.
Benson and Dundee, very much like the comment in the paper that most businesses have free parking. Those people buy parking. They buy the land, they improve the land, and they pay property taxes on the improvements on the land. Now, this is a little different, we own the land. And so, it's an advantage to the property owner that they don't have to buy and improve a parking lot, nor pay ongoing taxes. And it's somewhat of a disadvantage, that occasionally someone will pull up and say, "I don't have a quarter to run in for lunch, so I'm, instead I'm gonna drive through Taco John's." And so it's yin and yang, and it kinda is what it is. When those people bought their businesses, they knew what they were buying. And so, to change the game and shift the financial burden onto other taxpayers, I struggle with.
Does the city clean the parking lots? Like, do we have people go out to Scott Street and clean that lot, and Vine Street and clean that lot?
And then we have to light the lot. And then if somebody slips and falls, we have to pay for the injury.
I just think that it's.
Is there, do you think there'd be any willingness on the part of those to engage in? I don't know if it's in a special assessment, but some sort of.
There is a, there is a system.
Yeah.
That, that, well, there is also a parking meter system where if I go into Dunkin's and I spend X amount in Dunkin's, and the business sets that, if I spend five or ten dollars, I can get a parking voucher.
We have that, we have that today. The passport system allows that very thing to occur. So a business, your customer comes in, you give them a code that they use. So the way the passport system works is, when you pay for your parking, you're charging your credit card. That business gives you a code that you can enter into your account, that credits your account, whatever it is the business wants to offer as an incentive. So that exists today.
And does that change daily? Because I could see someone like me who'd get that code and use it for the rest of my life.
I'm sure there's some safety, you know.
Hopefully it's like a car wash, and it's somewhat unique, or it doesn't, you know, doesn't repeat, you know, every hour.
Melissa, I'm assuming it's, and I've heard it too, you know, get rid of the parking meters, you should have them, if you're gonna have them there, you should have them in front of everybody's house. I've, you know, heard all of that. But of course, we know that they're there to turn over parking, that was the original intent.
Which is indicated by the language in here, that there's a recognition that that's what they do.
So, but my question is, is that, I'm assuming this was brought forward based on some of the same things that I hear when I'm down on Hunter Block, they wanna get rid of the meters. Is that what brought this forward? And is it based on the inconvenience of not, people not having quarters to put in there? I mean, if we had the swipe meters, would that change anything? Or it's just straight up, people shouldn't have to pay to park down there?
I think just determining whether or not it's really a necessary thing, if this paying to park is really solving, is there really a problem of it? You know, is it necessary? Or is it something we could take away and offer up, that, hey, we're not charging you to park at our downtown? Omaha is charging, you know, just another way to kinda enhance.
Okay, so it's not how you pay necessarily, as much as the fact that you do pay?
That does run contrary to what just practically everybody uses for parking policy. The parking policy is demand-based. The most convenient stalls, you charge the highest premium for. And that pushes people into the, you know, the less convenient locations. Free eliminates any incentive to park anywhere other than the front door. You know, as a practical perspective, I don't think you can, if you remove the meters on Hunter Block, I think you'd have to remove them in the Vine Street lot. I mean, it makes no sense to let people park free out front and discourage them from going out back and paying to park. That just doesn't even make sense as a policy.
And that's part of the discussion, and you don't like street turnover. I mean, that's a good point. And as we talk to the business owners along the Hunter Block, you know, they, when you throw stuff out, then there is a number of arguments and suggestions that they would come back and say, "Well, based upon experience, we see this, that, and the other thing." And so, you know, these business owners, they understand their businesses better than anybody else. And so they know where their employees are parking. They know, you know, pretty much what the customer traffic is during business hours when they're metered versus after-hours around weekends when they're not metered. They know that stuff pretty darn well.
So, me, the evil guy who would steal that code and use it all the time, if I work for Keith Skinner, and he tells me not to park in front of his building, you know where I go park? In front of Bloomworks. And Keith's happy and I'm happy.
See, what I'm wondering too, is that, like, in the newspaper article that was in the Noomperl, one of the business owners said that that would make his employees and his salesmen very happy. So in other words, it's not really gonna increase their, you know, their customers, it's just making it easier for their employees to park.
I think you meant by that, though, again, like, employees and the salespeople, it's more, it doesn't matter how close they're parking, even if they're parking far away, right now, they're paying to park. You know, if you're gonna park at the back of it, you know, you're still having to pay to park in these meters.
Okay, so, but they could lease spaces like the other businesses do, right? For their employees? Because that's what the lease spaces are out there for a lot of those businesses, they lease for thirty dollars a month for their employees to park. I mean, I don't know any businesses that, you know, even the city has to, like, farm people out all over the place, and not everybody gets a paid spot, I don't think, but, I don't know, I guess I just think, gosh, you know, I had to park in front of my office, I had to pay a meter every single day, or I had to park a block away up in the neighborhood. I'm just, I'm really concerned, because there's a lot of different kinds of businesses on one district. So whereas if you're a bar or restaurant, this is really great for you, because you're open for lunch, this is awesome, I can see that would be great for that business. But if you're a hairdresser or a florist, this can be horrible for your business. And how do you meet that need? Because you can't undo that, right? It's an immediate impact on their business. Right now, everybody went in there with the same conditions. They all knew it when they went in there, nothing's changed. But now, all of a sudden, I've got, say, a florist, I have nowhere, I have no back door, no ability for people to pull up and get their flowers. And there's nothing I can do about it, because there happens to be ten bar owners on that block, they've got the ear of the people, they're gonna be loud, I'm just screwed, I gotta move. Because there's no way you're gonna be able to accommodate your customers in that type of business. So I just, I just don't see.
Well, and I just think it's even worse than that, because, you know, occasionally, I've been in one of those establishments. And I think that they're gonna find out that those people across the street from the Sawyer Building are gonna park there all day long. And so now, the occasional inconvenience of not having a quarter becomes the regular, "There is no parking there, I'm not even going up there." And my wife loves to go to the old market, and I tell her, "I'm not going," because I'm not driving her. I let her off at the restaurant, and I drive around the block five times, waiting for somebody to move. And so that's why they change their parking, so that they could create convenient parking, so businesses could prosper. And I think this has the exact. And I think this has the exact, on first blush may look like a good thing, it's gonna be a horrible thing. And, and, and I am very fond of those people that, that run those businesses and, and I, I have their best interest in mind. And I'm not doing it for any other reason than that, that's to say that this is wrong, I think.
Could we pilot something before we go this far? Cause see, my concern is that, yeah, every year, you know, it doesn't mean we're gonna do it, it just means we can. But we also know it's gonna happen. And we don't have any experience of what that's gonna mean. Could we not just have an agreement where we pilot something for thirty days, sixty days, ninety days? Bag the meters, pilot something so that we know what it's gonna mean and so that the businesses know what it's gonna mean before we commit ourselves to changing, you know, our, our laws and everything else to accommodate something that we don't know what's gonna happen? You know, maybe the, the businesses will come back and say, yeah, it seemed like a good idea, but this is not working. It would be a heck of a lot cheaper, a heck of a lot easier to pilot a program for thirty, sixty, ninety days. And, and the businesses that are asking for this the most could tell us which of those, you know, months are the ones that they'd be able to really tell if this is gonna work. I mean, I'm open to a pilot program of some kind, but I just, I don't want to change, you know, and create an ordinance that does this every year without knowing what we mean. You know, we don't even know what it's gonna mean for these people.
Can I have some, some information? Couple of things. First of all, when you talk about yearly reviews, it's very difficult for us as department heads to plan and budget when we don't know whether that revenue's gonna be there or not. And as Ms. White said, it's very, it's even more difficult to hire someone who doesn't know if they're gonna have a job in the next year. We would lose two parking technicians in addition to the maintenance person. If the revenues go down that far, we could not sustain that. They do other things in addition to parking enforcement in the metered area. They also do handicap enforcement all over the town, and they also assist by picking up bicycles and taking them, or, so an officer doesn't have to do that. So we'd lose that benefit. In addition to that, if those two parking technicians are removed, that means that responsibility's gonna fall back on the officers. If we take the meters out, I came from Fort Dodge. When I got to Fort Dodge, we talked about this at length. Fort Dodge took the meters out in the nineteen eighties, I believe, because they heard that it was the best thing for infusing energy back into the downtown. It was the worst thing that ever happened. The problem we ran into is exactly what you're talking about. I watched it every day. I stood in businesses and watched people do it. We'd have a parking technician go by, they'd chalk the tire and have to run a route. As soon as they rounded the corner, employees would come out from their business, walk to where their car was parked in front of a neighbor's business and wipe the chalk off or move their car a couple inches. And it went on all day long. What we saw, we finally put the meters back in downtown, and because of that, we were able to generate enough revenue at a quarter an hour to revitalize a parking lot for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that had been sitting that way since nineteen fifty-six. In Fort Dodge, the only meters that existed were in parking lots. The idea of lots is to drive people to long-term parking in the lots. Well, if you have a lot where you have to pay, like the Sawyer Building or other places, and there's free parking on the street and you can't enforce the system effectively, we, you're gonna park on the street. We had more arguments, more heated discussions about your, your attendants lying, um, I wasn't here fifteen minutes, I wasn't here two hours. Those are big issues. And, and those challenges, um, grow because if you have it in one area and it's different in another, that standard or lack of standardization becomes very difficult to enforce. The other thing that concerns me and a, and a question for, for counsel is, when I look at this ordinance, if I understand this correctly, and please help me clarify, if we take the meters out, they're no longer part of the meter zone. It says a parking meter zone. How do we put them back? That's not part of the ordinance, so how would we go about putting them back? Because they're no longer part of the parking meter zone. It says metered. If they're not metered, how do we put them back?
I, I guess the answer to that would be when we come up to the subsequent review of parking meter zones, if there was a request that we re-designate an area as a parking meter zone, then, then the meters would again be authorized for that zone. But that's, that's a hypothetical at this point because, because again, what the ordinance is, is intended to do is establish a baseline for discussion where business owners and residents can come in and state their case, uh, pro or con. And right now, there, there, there isn't that process for, for doing that. So that, again, that was kind of the intent of, of the ordinance, rather than just going out with a blanket, uh, yes or no, all z, all, all zones throughout the city gone, that was, uh, struck most folks as kind of a over, overreach. And we wanted to do this as prudently and as, and...
And I appreciate your interest in the discussion, it's been very hearty, but the, what I saw in Fort Dodge is the exact opposite of this. In fact, what we saw is those people that were parking in front of businesses all day now moved further out and it created turnover where it was supposed to. So what scares me is we're going backwards.
Do we incentivize, uh, people walking farther? In other words, I, as I understand it, you can get longer duration, and you'll have to forgive me, I seldom find myself in a situation to use a meter. I think you get longer, but in the same, in a shorter period of time, will it, for example, example that's coming to mind again is the Hunter Block. If, if I park in the back lot, will it cost me, let's throw out a number, will it cost me twice as much to park on the street in front of a business that also has, let's say, a back entrance that I could use equally as well?
They're the same there, which is fifty cents an hour.
The fee on ten-hour meters is less, I think, per hour. We only have two-hour meters or ten-hour meters, so it's fifty cents an hour, I think, at a two-hour meter and it's...
Is that a physical, is that a software or a physical? Oh, okay.
Longer walks from everything. They can be on the edges of downtown.
So First Avenue by, um, First Baptist Church, Smith Davis Building are eight-hour meters.
Ten hours and they're cheaper.
And that's what's set up in Fort Dodge to incentivize people to park in parking lots, that, or employees are gonna be there for long periods of time.
Sure. And I, I guess my question is, and I, perhaps this is a limitation, and I, I wouldn't suggest that we go out and buy all new meters because I can't imagine the fiscal cost, but is it a software issue of if, let's say there are two-hour meters in the back of the Hunter Block and in the front of the Hunter Block? Is it possible for the ones, and I'm just throwing numbers out for discussion, is it possible for the ones on the street to cost twice as much as the ones in the back parking lot under our current system without having to buy new equipment? Is that a programming issue or, okay?
Well, from what I'm hearing, it's not about how much it costs or about the convenience of having a quarter. It's about whether you should even have to pay. That, that's the big question. That it sounds like from what Melissa was saying, that, you know, that's kind of what they're saying is, well, should you even have to pay? Would it help our business down here if you didn't pay at all?
And I suppose my alternative to that is, and I'm just throwing it out for discussion, I'm not sure if I agree with it, but just a, just throwing an idea is if we incentivize people to, to walk farther, economics really, it's, I don't know if it's quite supply and demand, but if I'm willing to walk farther, like I'm willing to drive around forever to avoid paying for parking, and I'm one of those too. If, if, but there are times where the weather or I've got to be at something, and then I will pay. I'll be very annoyed about it, but I will. But is that a possible choice of, but that's a, a choice I can make economically of what's it worth to me? And, and I don't know, perhaps that wouldn't address the stated concern, but would it actually address the underlying concern or not? And I just throw that out as a discussion, because, uh, I, I wouldn't be willing to pay more to park in, in an area like that unless I were running into a place, but then again, does that penalize businesses where you can only run in? I don't know. But I think there's a lot of pieces here, and I think, I think, I, I welcome the discussion. I, I really am curious to hear. I, I really wanna hear more about, particularly from businesses of all different types, ones who have front doors, one who, who don't, who don't have back doors. Because, and, and I think we've got time because of the ordinance process. I, I really would like to, I know we always, I think in general, if I may say so, we get, we sometimes get frustrated that we don't always get as much input from a diverse, wide, a number of people. And I, I would really like to hear more from more people because I, I don't think I'm hearing enough, and so I, I'm not in a position to know what's best, quite frankly.
The challenge you're gonna run to is that people have had it this way for so long, they don't know what happens when you take them away.
Well, that's true, and I think that's where it comes into having more information and, and, both, on, on all issues really, um, so, I don't...
Is that something though, that doing, you know, rather than moving forward with this ordinance right now and doing a pilot, uh, test so that people did get a feel for it, so that the people using those, because for me, it's really more about the customers. You know, it really is about the people that have to go down there. You know, most places I've ever worked, even when I was in retail as a kid, they'd make you park in the back forty. So the fact that it's gonna be better for businesses, employees to not, you know, have to pay to park, well, more than likely, they shouldn't be pa, parking in that lot anyway. They should be parking about three or four blocks away. You know, that's just the way it's always been. Employers always say, you are not parking where my customers can park. So my question...
Did they check for you? I'm, I'm sorry, they used to check when, my high school, college job, they would check and you would get a demerit. It would affect your future employment status if you were parking, uh, where you weren't supposed to be. And you're right, I, in my case, at the Mall of Bluffs and Pen, Pennies when I was in high school and college, and, uh, you had to be way out. You couldn't be in the north parking lot. Do I have that right? No, south, south. You could, you couldn't be in the, the parking lot nearest the building, you had to be out on the other side because that was the area where, and I think it was accurate. Like a lot of businesses, that's where the cus, customers and probably customers spending the most tended to park.
So my question is, is that before you move forward with this, would you, would the two that brought it forward reconsider maybe before moving this forward in its current manner, would you consider doing a pilot program? Let the businesses find out if this is going to work in maybe a particular area? I mean, the one obviously I think that has most concern is that Hunter Block area, cause I've not ever heard from, Main Street Cafe is full. They, you know, they're like, you can't get a table at lunch, and they have no parking lot, all metered parking everywhere. I have never gotten a call to complain. Same with Dunkin's. I think this is one very defined area that has, you know, that believes this might help them. So I guess I just would rather see us try it out and see if it really works before we create an ordinance that could be...
Yeah, we can, we can kick, yeah, we can kick that around between meetings, sure.
Let's kick it around, and then the ideas of exact, exactly what it would be, and again, the, the idea, the other idea throughout, I don't know, it might not be a good idea, but it's an idea of, just for discussion of, are there, and, and it sounds as if you are receptive to, you know, this maybe isn't the answer, but you've opened up the discussion. So, so I'm curious to hear of other possibilities, and I'm curious to hear what, what people think about them and, and the customers. I, I care quite a bit about the customers as well. I also care about the, the general taxpayer who's subsidizing that, that area particularly heavily. So I, I just need to, I need to hear more, but I, I welcome the discussion.
Yep, and that's, that's how we feel, you know, it's, there is no intention to impose anything. We really wanted to create a, a process for that discussion so that everybody felt as though that they had a way to bring the, bring their, their interest for their business or their, their, their residency, you know?
Could we maybe, could we hear some more of, of those ideas? I imagine people have them both for and against and probably in between. And I'd like to hear some more, uh, you know, some information. It sounds like we might be able to get some, we might have some experience that, that people, perhaps pro and con on, on staff, might be able to give us a fact, neutral-based assessment of what they've seen here, what they've seen elsewhere, also what you might see and what other people might be able to give us.
Well, we had done some research.
Okay.
One with Newton. Greg relayed the issue with Newton. It was more, uh, the cost of updating Davenport rather than Dubuque. And I don't know if you got that information, but they initially were monitoring by going with machines that put in the license plate number and then would come back, uh, two hours later. If that same vehicle was in that block, then they got a ticket. The number of tickets went down, the, uh, the enforcement revenue wasn't there. They went from full-time enforcement to part-time enforcement to no enforcement at all. The, uh, businesses then reacted and said, you know, you're killing us, there's, there's nowhere to park because people are parking here all day long, and so now they're going back to some type of enforcement in Davenport. And so with no enforcement, if that's what it is, we, we determine that, that there's no enforcement necessary in a zone that you've eliminated, then what happened in Davenport is exactly, I got a hundred dollars on the side with anybody that is exactly what's gonna happen. And, and there'll be no parking for these businesses, and it'll be very unfortunate.
I think that's, you know, it, obviously what, you know, Dubuque and Newton and Davenport.
A hundred bucks is going out on loan for me, so...
Well, I mean, obviously, it wasn't quite the case about Dubuque and Davenport just removing their meters. I think there's always more to the story, cause I know when Davenport, cause I was talking to our office out there when I was still with Kestner McGivney. I'm like, you guys built all your meters, how did you do this? Well, they built two big parking garages that the employees could park in and pay to park in, and that left all the parking open for the customers. So there's, you can tell this much of the story and it sounds great, but then when you start talking to people, there's a much more to the story. Like Newton, a lot more to that story than just removing them for the benefits. So I think, you know, if we can get the actual facts of each community that's done it, I tried to Google it and I, I'm finding, well, they took them out and they're putting them back in, and it's about fifty-fifty, so...
One of the things we, that might be considered is, instead, I, I think I appreciate the, or understand, I should say, the, the understanding of a, like an annual review. If it were insurance, it'd be like open enrollment, if, if I can make that analogy, I guess. But I could also see the point of, I can also see the countervailing point of, uh, if, if it reopens as a matter of course every year, it would lead to budget uncertainty, uh, for businesses and the city as well. Is it a matter of if, if, if the intent is this ought to be something that is decided by policy with both elected branches rather than just one, if that's the intent? Then it seems to me that perhaps it ought not, it ought to be based on how our ordinances normally go, which is it's the law if and until it's not, which would be more certain and be harder to change. And I, I think whatever we do, I'm fairly convinced that I don't wanna make it really easy to change willy-nilly back and forth because I don't, I doubt anyone on any side of this probably thinks that's a good idea. So, so maybe it, may, maybe the, I believe I get the, the intent, and there's a lot to be said for, but maybe the annual, but I also get the intent of the effective date, it has to start at some point, but maybe, maybe the annual, and that may hamstring it as well. Let's say for some, it's probably an academic point, but maybe some year, there's a reason to make a decision, then three months later not to. If it's annual, does that tie your hands and say you can't, you're stuck with it for a year? So it, it may have unintended consequences. So I, I think there's just a lot to think about.
I think I'd have a hard time leasing a storefront in an area under these conditions, if I knew this was the ordinance and under these conditions. Cause if I leased it this year and there were no parking meters and I knew that for the business I'm running, that works. That's really what's gonna work for my business. And then next year, they vote to put them back in. I think I'd have a really hard time committing to a long-term lease in a neighborhood where I don't know. If I'm gonna have parking for my customers, it could change every year. That's really tough when you're trying to lease a space for your particular type of business. So I think you're really gonna have a hard time too with the, uh, unleased spaces down there if people don't know exactly what this means for them.
How many of zones, for example, like, I'm thinking, uh, emergency snow routes and things of that nature that are designated? How many of those are done administratively versus requiring approval of the council, even if it albeit be in many ways pro forma? How, how many, I, I don't have a good grasp of where the line should be there on this particular issue. And I, I throw that out as a question, that probably is an unfair question to expect an answer to right off the top. But that'd be something I'd be curious to know of. Is, would this be inappropriate? It would be a moving of a line, I think we'd have to acknowledge that. Is, is it appropriate? Is there precedent? Does it make sense that, you know, I'm, and I guess I'm the procedural geek when it comes to that sort of thing. Does that make sense? And I don't know, as I sit here, whether it does. Maybe it does.
Yeah, in my mind...
I don't know.
And Greg will shoot me for this because this was my first reaction. If you have the courage of your convictions, get rid of the meters, all of them. And then we'll lay the people off and we'll go forward. If that's what you feel is best for the community, then I think that's the council's decision. But for you to administratively go in and say, and we like this block, we don't like that block, we like that business, we don't like that business. And, and how do you explain that to individual businesses on the street? And like I say, if... And like I say, if you've got eleven businesses, and six say, "I don't want the meter," and five say, "I gotta have the meter," then how are you going to make that call? I mean, that's just a nightmare call to make, that I, as a council member, wouldn't want to put myself in that position of doing that year after year. And so, if the meters you feel are a detriment to downtown, to Council Bluffs, then get rid of all the meters. Or, if they do serve a purpose in turning over the parking spaces in dense urban areas that don't have areas where businesses can acquire property and create their own private parking, then let it ride. And I didn't ever decide where those meters went, like I say, I've been running these streets for sixty years, and those meters have been on the same streets for sixty years. And so, nobody in this room made that decision, it's just that they're in a downtown dense urban area, that's typically how cities work. There's very little retail, as we all know, in Council Bluffs, this is a business government district where we sit today, there's, there is a nightlife district in the Hunter Block, there are not many retail businesses in Council Bluffs, it's not going to generate a lot of sales tax. Some of those areas that got rid of the meters probably did so, assuming that people would come down there and shop, because they have shopping. We don't have shopping in our downtown, there is no shopping, and so it's not going to create new sales tax revenue, it's just going to get rid of parking meter revenue, which then will cause me administratively to get rid of parking meter enforcement, because there's nothing to pay for it, and there will be no enforcement, and then people will park wherever they want to park.
Well, and the librarian was very upset, worried that we would take the parking meters out of the library parking lot, which, if you read the Non-Brice Facebook, you know, some people saying, "Why should I have to plug a meter to go to the library?" Well, she knows for a fact that if, that's why they were put in there in the first place, because they would never have anywhere for their patrons to park. So, you know, for as much as we've got people that really want it, we've got people that are a little edgy about what will happen if they pull the meters out. So, I tried to reassure that, based on what this said, it would be a government district area where it probably wouldn't happen, but there's no guarantees.
Could we maybe hear by the next meeting, or hopefully in between, more from Public Works about how, if, I appreciate that this is not something that would or should, in my opinion, be something that's continually evaluated, because on the priority risk list of things, the exact zones of where parking should be and where it should not be, based on changing conditions, is not the highest priority. I get that. How does that work now? Before we change something, I don't know, I want to know if the change will, what is wrong, and will the proposed change accomplish that? So, I need to know more about how the current process works. If I, if I'm the, and like I say, I don't need to know it right this second, if I were, we keep using the Hunter Block as an example, so I'll stick with it, if I were the Hunter Block and wanted to change it today, in the absence of this ordinance, I'd like to know more about what I have to do and the mechanics of it, setting aside the substantive arguments, whether it's a good idea or not for a moment. I don't understand how they would do it today, and I assume there must be a way. Before we change it, I'd like to know what we do now.
Just want clear.
Sure.
Somebody has a parking complaint or concern, they would come and talk to me, and we would look at their individual circumstance and see if there's a way that we can accommodate it.
What about...
The types of things we get are, "I need a handicap stall right in front of my front door, because I have employees handicapped."
Sure.
And our response is, we put handicap stalls at the end of the blocks, every block, per ADA requirement, next to the wheelchair ramps that are on the corners, so that the handicap people don't have to, we don't have to build a handicap ramp, you know, at random locations.
Do you...
We get requests for, "I need more ten-hour meters, my people don't have any place to park."
That's good.
So, we may go on the edges and look and see, do we have any two-hour meters that are getting no use?
Do you get asked a lot, is this the sort of thing that you get asked often, whether to change the meters or to get rid of them completely? Do people actually ask you that?
It goes in streaks, I mean, when a, when a new business comes in, they're, you know, a lot of times they'll say, "Let's do things different."
Sure.
And, but no, not a lot. I mean, that's, I mean, I'm telling you, status quo, the problem I see with your, with your process that you're proposing is, it takes a general policy, and it boils down to individual needs, that it's impossible to meet every individual's property owner's needs. So, you're going to have to decide which ones are the winners and which ones are the weaks.
Sure, and I definitely don't want to do that, what I'm just trying to understand is, what is the current general policy?
It doesn't happen all that often, like I say, if there's a new business that comes in, they may say, "Well, I need, I need five-minute parking." We did that for scooters in the Hunter Block. We got one or two stalls that have fifteen-minute parking or something.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of that, that's interesting.
It was of the nature of that business, you know.
Do we do that, for example, let's take the flower shop, places like that where people wouldn't be expected to stay an hour and a half, but need to have quick access? Do we, do we, or do people, I suppose if they don't request it...
Not that request specifically, it doesn't come up very often. Rarely do people ask for fifteen-minute parking.
Well, they're in front of Midstates over by Omni, there's fifteen-minute meters.
Oh.
And I only know that because I'm always trying to park over there to go to a meeting or do something, and it's like, ah, darn it, those are only fifteen minutes, that won't work.
What street?
Main Street.
Main Street.
Well, as I recall, those were there because people paid their power bills, was it?
I don't know. I just know that they're short meters.
I think they went in to pay their power bills.
I always wondered why they were so short there, to be honest.
25 minutes.
I think they're, are they short at the post office, too? I think you got some short meters.
They are short, and that I can vouch for.
So, we try and look at what the needs are, but we try and balance everybody's needs, and we're not going to grant one person's request at the expense of somebody else.
Yeah.
Well, I think, it sounds like we're all agreed on that, that it ought not to be certainly, it would be complete chaos, speaking for myself, if this business had it, this one didn't, you know. It sounds like we've all agreed that that's not, so I'm very glad to hear that, so...
And I think that kind of goes to your first part of your question about process.
Yeah.
Because right now, you know, we seem to be not putting all the pieces of process together currently, and that, we have an ordinance that provides for the establishment of zones, and then people are supposed to be able to come in and be able to look at the zones and review them.
Is that how the law reads today?
Yes, sir, yes, Mayor. It is, so...
It does.
So...
Is that how it reads today, Dick?
So, at least, you know, that that kind of goes to the process, then, where a business owner or somebody considering buying a property or moving into downtown area would then have a way to come in and...
Which we have, we just don't call them zones. We have a list...
Okay.
Of all the meter locations, we have maps, but we just don't say, "Here's our parking zones."
Okay.
See, this way, it'd just be a lot more uncertain.
Well, a map, though, would, genuinely would be helpful, because, you know, when I'm going to a place, sometimes, and I'm sure there are reasons, probably a lot of them historical, but also logical to a large degree as well, but I learn by chance, you know, if I move twenty, pick a number, twenty-five feet this way, it's suddenly half as much to park, and sometimes it's hard to be able to discern a reason, and there's nowhere I can go to look, I just kind of pick that up by chance over time. Sometimes I feel like I hit the parking lottery, because I find, I put money in, and it gives me more minutes than I, and it'd be nice to have a map.
Oh, I think the map's a good idea, I think having that list available online to anybody that wants to see it would be great. That I'm all in favor of, what I'm not in favor of is changing the current ordinance to make it to where it could actually change every single year. I think that's where it'd be hard to be a business owner, or to make a decision about where to locate a business, if I don't know that it's going to be consistently one way for, you know, foreseeable future, to know it could change every single year would be a problem for me.
I tend to agree, open enrollment might be, some, in the sense of ought to have the courage of the conviction, very true, ought to, if this is what it's going to be like pretty much everything we do, it is until a future, you can't bind future councils, of course, principle of government, it ought to be, and not, it ought to be not easily undone, so that we recognize the gravity of it and understand the consequences of it, whatever we do. And the current system does that, you have to say it for the current system, it certainly doesn't lead to uncertainty. So, if we change it, it could use more clarity, I think is fair also, but if we change it, we'd want it to be pretty clear what it is, and why we're changing it, and what it would be. So, again, I genuinely welcome the discussion, because I think it's something, every so often, these sorts of things, you just discuss and think, and oftentimes you think, okay, the way we do it's fine, sometimes you think it ought to be tweaked, because some things we've done a certain way forever, doesn't mean that it's always the best thing to keep doing forever, and I know I harp on that on occasion, but there are other times where there's a pretty darn good reason why we're doing it that way. So, I welcome the discussion.
Yeah.
Exactly, and that's exactly what I think the point of it is, is to have the discussion and hear all sides of it, so then we can go back and say, well, we've looked into it, here's the final, you know, we've had a...
So, I think there have been a lot of concerns expressed on, or ideas and concerns expressed on a lot of sides, and so I, I'm genuinely interested in hearing more from pro, con, and neutral about it. Have we beaten that?
Thoroughly.
Beaten that horse?
I think it was dead, dead hours ago.
Well, it may have been. Fortunately, we don't have to plug the meter.
All right, any other ordinances under first consideration?
Sure, you enjoy that.
Just very quickly, Mr. Gross, on 5D, the rezoning down between First and Second Avenue, I was just kind of curious, were there any potential buyers or developers for that particular parcel, was that factoring into the consideration here? Because I see where, you know, you have areas to the south that are R3, and it's going to be surrounded by C2s, I was just...
Not really. I mean, we judge the rezoning primarily by what the West Broadway Plan had proposed, and what the zoning was to the south.
Okay. No, I was just curious if we had prospective purchasers, or this is...
At this point, no, we are in process of getting RFP, we've got several meetings this week on property at 28th and Second. And part of that would be multifamily.
So, is the thought potentially that in the future, those surrounding properties would also be rezoned, or in order to make it, I know that's kind of the thought in the 2030 plan?
Well, as we own them, we would designate them to a use that we had thought that we would want to pursue as identified in the plan. With one caveat, you could probably make the statement that a lot of the properties to the south are probably overzoned. They are predominantly single-family, there are some multifamily structures in there. As a general rule, what we will try to do when we redevelop these parcels, we typically will want to see a like-use face a like-use.
Yeah.
Or some close facsimile to it.
Yep.
So, if there's single-family there, we probably want to do single-family, or, you know, attach single-family, maybe rental, but it's the typology, and we make those uses change primarily at an alley location.
Okay. I like the thought to get rid of overzoning whenever possible, so...
Well, but there, there are issues with that, too. I mean, you've got, you know, some scattered multifamily uses that have been built there by right, and, you know, we have to be careful of that, too, in looking at it, but, you know, there's a lot of single-family homes there.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions on the ordinances under first consideration?
Is the six or the sevens I lost? Ordinance is six, are we on number six or seven?
Um, we're not there yet, but open both of those up, so second or third, whatever you want.
Has there been more discussion on, to Sharon's point about industrial? I have not had really any further thought about it, quite frankly, and I didn't know if anybody had any further thoughts about...
This is on the fencing.
Yeah, sorry, page 167.
I know that ConAgra, they're fine with it, they wouldn't change the way they're doing things, so...
Oh, okay.
But, you know, we put it out there, I haven't gotten a call from anybody saying that they felt that it was, would be, you know, a disadvantage to their zoning, so I don't really have an issue with it, we've put it out there long enough that people should have had an opportunity to respond to it.
I appreciate you having raised it, yeah, I hadn't heard anything either, so I was just curious.
Yeah, because we certainly didn't want to take away anybody's flexibility, so I appreciate raising the question and giving an opportunity to feedback. Great.
Any other questions on the second or third considerations? Anything on the resolutions?
Yeah, I'm going to have to abstain on 8B, that is a resolution for the mayor to authorize an agreement with Airheart Griffin and Associates, so my husband's employed by that firm, although we would not financially gain from it, on the surface, it could appear to be a conflict, so I would not vote on that, I will abstain.
And the other issues on the resolutions?
I've got a question on E, but I think we might have lost Larry by this late.
He's right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's hiding right up there.
In plain sight.
See what happens, you're right there in plain sight. Okay, so, it's that beard, I'm never getting used to the beard. The only question I have was, what was the original estimate?
Five million, the engineer's estimate...
Mm-hmm.
Was five million, seven thirty-three, four eighty-three. Just over seven percent above the engineer's estimate. Given the circumstances, I think it's not too bad.
Seems to be, we've been lucky lately to be eight or 10% over.
Seven percent, that's would have been really not too bad, but okay.
Indeed.
Well, that said, seven percent of a big number's a big number.
That's right.
Well, that's true.
It's a big number, and that's why I asked.
Yeah, true.
Okay.
But you, I asked you, do you have the money to do that, and you told me...
Well, here we are.
My last question would be on G, and that probably Melissa or Councilman Ringenberg could speak to. Does that only apply to people moving into our community, or could somebody, could a veteran who already lives here take advantage of that program?
It should be for any veterans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, would also include people who already live in the community.
Well, and it looked at, I looked at other, I called the guy who administers it for the governor, and as you can imagine, not very helpful, he's in a rush, and look, go to the website and look, so. So, they got one example on the website, which is a small community, and the incentives are as little as a tour of the community, a welcome basket, certain banks in the community would offer home loans application fee-free, which is not unusual, if you're a, if you're a banking customer, they oftentimes will give you those things. So, you, we could create incentive packages that would do both, I mean, take care of someone new to the community that wanted to buy or build a new house, somebody in the community that wanted to do something. It looked to me like our requirement, as far as the incentives, was fairly flexible, and I say that having the fact the guy really didn't give me much information. The difficulty, and I think it's a great idea, there are only four cities that are Iowa Home Base, some within a county, Sioux County, or Woodbury County and Sioux City, I guess, are both listed, mostly they're countywide, but that doesn't prohibit us from doing that, I think we should definitely encourage the county to do it also, and, but the, one of the difficulties, and I don't know if you got the response from the chamber, but I think you contacted Bob Munt and said, "Hey, can you help us with this?" And he said, "Well, I think the incentive deal's not difficult..." And he said, well, I can, the incentive deal's not difficult. The, the, whatever else. The difficult part, he felt, and I asked this guy, I said, you know, how do you deter, or if you go to their website, I guess, the one community went to the, the 2010 census and said, we've got X number of businesses. You have to get 10% of those. That's 250 businesses that need to go online and sign up. It didn't look like it was a very onerous process to do that. But some, and as I told Bob Munt, he said, I, I don't know. I've got time to have my people do 250 people signing up. Some people will sign up as they read, just out of the goodness of their hearts. But my sense is we're not going to get to 250 just on people's goodwill. And so somebody will need to go door to door to businesses to encourage them to sign up. And, and, and so how that happens, if that's done by the, the veterans group, if that's done by the city, we, we, it didn't sound like the chamber had anything in their budget to do that, that they had any desire to do that.
That was one of my.
I'd say, actually Lori Shilton from the chamber reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and I included, when we were first talking about this. There's been, what, 26 counties, I think. We'd be like the 27th. But we, like you said, it's a city, not a county.
Yeah.
But I do know, I've talked to Tom Hanifin and Justin Schultz, both are going to put it forward for the county too. Because what the goal is, is we would partner together with the county, with us, and with the chamber, and then local businesses to do a committee of sorts. And then you, as that committee, would be in charge of getting the different businesses in the community to sign up and be a part of it.
So the committee would do that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So does Home Base, um, do they actually, does the state, do the administration, like, are, they have somebody to administer it and make sure you're at your 10% or whatever? We don't have to have, like, hired person to administer this, right? Okay, good.
You just, they pretty much, the way I read it, take you on your word. We got
Right.
2,500 businesses, here's 10% of those.
It's more than wanting you to make an effort.
Yeah.
Well, and, and they even interpret that to be a percentage of employees. And, and there are already a number of sizable employers in the city whose, whose corporate structure has already enrolled them in the program elsewhere in the state.
Yeah.
For instance, Tysons, you know, that they, they qualify as one of those.
Yeah, I wasn't clear on that. If it, because I remember reading somewhere it was 10% of the businesses, 10% of the employees. And I don't know if that was mutually exclusive or if that, if it had to be both.
As you point out, I think that there's some wiggle room in how they define that. I, I think it really goes more into kind of driving community involvement in order for employers to reach out to, to veterans and for, for communities to provide that basket of incentives, if you will. And that's why we want to reach out to, to the county. Because just by nature of, of their taxing authority, they are able to do certain things that, that we can't do as readily. So it really is kind of a team effort to kind of bring this all together.
Well, and one of the things that I don't know that, I'm assuming that retired veterans do know. But the state of Nebraska charges state income tax on your retirement benefits. Why the state of Iowa doesn't. And so we have an inherent.
Oh, they know that.
I assume that gets around.
I assure you they do.
But we have an inherent advantage just on that.
Yeah.
With offered retirees that want to stay in the area. So.
Yeah. For those that are retired, then there's a, and there's another package of, of state benefits that are provided. So now we're bundling that in with, with additional incentives, albeit sometimes limited, that a county or municipality can, can offer. And then you bring that in with employers that are saying, hey, we're, we're interested in having those folks living and working in our community as opposed to across the, the river. It's, it's just a, it's just a way of setting up outreach.
And then what I was told by the gentleman who was too busy talking to me was that all four of those qualifications need to be accomplished before
Yeah.
you file your application. And so if we make a resolution of support, we can't file an application until we have the 250 businesses signed up.
And there's, I asked him whether or not there's a timeframe and how much, how long it was taking other counties or municipalities to get this taken care of. He was saying it was taking them on average about six months to get all the squares filled. So.
So would you get the businesses signed up first? And then how, how does the incentive package for the city come together? Is that something that the group would make a proposal, asking the city, would you make this your incentive package? How, and at what point do we have to have that incentive package ready? Because it reads that we have to have something.
Well, we, and, and again, how the mayor kind of phrased it, I think is, is entirely appropriate. You know, some of that included private entities, you know, like the YMCA or.
Yeah, would give you 10% off your membership fee.
Sounds pretty fair.
Exactly. So it was kind of a, it was kind of a loose knit thing.
Okay.
So I was real concerned about that, that we were gonna be taking money from one taxpayer and the other. It didn't look like that at all.
Kind of like the neighborhood welcoming committee.
This is just starting the process for us to begin to partner with, with the county and with the Chamber of Commerce to try and get this thing moving forward.
So that committee would put together, though, they would be the ones to help design some type of an incentive package and get a raised buy-in on it?
Yeah.
Okay. It sounds like wonderful program.
It sounds really revenue neutral in the sense of it's getting people to, it's the spirit of it.
Theory could be revenue generating.
Well, it could be. Well, fair enough. Very good point. That's a good point. It's a very good point.
Other questions on the resolutions? Anything on the permits and cancellation?
Yeah, Chief, do you have any concerns about the one applicant who has about four, yeah?
Six months.
At this point, it looks like they're fairly isolated. Um,
Okay.
I don't have a concern right now.
Broadway bar.
We'll keep an eye on it though.
It, it did appear like there, there wasn't a, a pattern or, I, I was just, I didn't know if, if they had reached out, which I know they don't have to, but.
Nope, they have not reached out.
Uh, I, I, all right. I.
We'll be reaching out to them.
Sure. I, I appreciate that. I don't have any great concerns this year, though, of course, over time, if that keeps up, I, I may. But.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is Mr. Carmichael still here?
He was never here, no.
Yeah, he's already.
Okay.
Question that. Oh, well, yeah, he's probably gone.
I, I had some questions about the request for waiver on the rental inspection fees, but.
Well, I want, the, Greg probably knows a little bit about it. Or Dick does, I guess. We, we did administratively waive that fee. It came in before the first, end of the first business day.
You and I know a bit about that.
You did or did not?
We, we did waive it.
You did waive it?
So is, is that particular request moot then?
Yep.
There was some discussion about possibly expanding that action. I'm discussing that tonight, but.
But that was kind of going to my question for, questions for Mr. Carmichael is, you know, do we, do we have a, a larger issue? And I appreciate the action with respect to that applicant because I reached out to him and to see if he was available to come in tonight. Turns out that he's an active duty, uh, Air Force crew member and he's out of the country. And his, his job and his mission capacity limits his ability to come back. So I thank the, I thank everyone involved for, for, for making an exception in, in that particular case. And just wondering whether or not there were other cases.
I have one other letter that came in too late to be placed on this agenda requesting a waiver. He came in two or three days late. And his, his, essentially he claims he did not get the initial notice letter from the city and was just operating under what had been the past timeframe to get things done. And thought it would be timely coming in last week, but was not.
Okay.
Because how, because it had been in March, is that correct, for a long time?
It was actually always due January 1, but wasn't considered late until like March 31st or April 1.
The city would carry it at their.
Yeah, the, there is a grace period in, in the old code language.
You know, I, I'm quite comfortable leaving it. I, I do, I do think in the law contemplated, I remember contemplated having the ability to have those types of exceptions. And it's, I don't think it would be appropriate for us to, unless it becomes a, a larger issue, which I doubt it, especially since now that it is the rule, I, you know, a second year into it, it's going to be harder for someone to say they didn't know or reasonably shouldn't know.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable leaving it with the mayoral branch and executing the law. It sounds like they're doing it well and.
Revenue collector.
So we are waiving or we're not waiving? I'm not confused.
I thought he said he was.
We are waiving them all.
We are waiving them for the first 30 days, right?
Well.
If we approve that. Is that what this is?
I don't think that was a matter, a carte blanche rule, was it?
Did you say you were gonna waive them all?
I don't think so.
Do what?
Just for one.
Just for one, yeah. I thought somewhere I saw 30 days. Was that in an email instead? Maybe I read it wrong.
No, I got an email saying that you might be bringing forward a request to waive the late fees because, yeah, through the end of January. But I didn't get anything saying.
I had gotten that from someone else.
Oh, I didn't get that at all.
I thought maybe I read it wrong. I thought maybe it was.
So 8I is then no longer on, on the agenda?
Doesn't sound like it needs to be.
If, I tell you what, if you give us direction that you're not interested in waiving any other late fee, or any other late fees, just as one that came in on the very, on the first business day, before the end of the first business day, that helps. It gives a definitive answer. So it doesn't come back again.
Jesse?
I was just trying to get a clarification on that, what, whether it was one or all, because I have had some complaints. Obviously, I was involved in the, the rental inspection program for Steve. But I did have some complaints about, there was some confusion about, it'd always been done the first of March and then it was January. And I think, I don't, I, this first year is a little bit of a struggle.
Right.
I think, I don't think it was anyone's intent, at least the people that talked to me, was ever their intent to be late. But it seemed like the late fees were even, I mean, they're stiff. I mean, especially if you have 30 or 50 rentals, they're going to get real expensive real fast. So I just thought I'd voice that.
I think we just rely on Tim to.
I think common sense. It sounds, it sounds like the safety valve, which was always, it was a very valid concern about, you know, the enforcement of it, that the, the purpose of it being kept in mind, of course, is not revenue generating. It's to keep the places safe. It's the first year, that excuse, which is a good one. I don't, when I say the word excuse, I don't intend to say it's not. An understandable reason. But certainly next year, I, I don't think it would be.
You would include a letter to that effect. If that's what you want to do, then we would, if we waive it, we said.
Is there no grace period now?
There's not this year.
There used to be three months where the taxpayer, Harry, the cost of the business, which everybody just took as a matter of course to take advantage of. Which I would too, if the law allowed me to do it.
So why don't we, why don't we leave it then on the agenda? And we can see if, if there's anybody who wants to discuss it then, this evening.
Fair enough.
And, and then we can maybe
Fair enough.
make, make that little tweak.
If we don't make it, make a decision tonight on the issue, it'll, it's coming back.
Right.
Understood.
Fair enough.
So it doesn't require council action for the mayor to waive those?
Not, not, not the ones that could be waived by operation of law, which is essentially interpretation gave the one that we did, been a straightforward.
Okay, but you would need that then to move forward with more waivers?
We would need something from you to authorize anything beyond that.
And that's why it was on here to begin with, right? Is what I understood.
And that could be discussed tonight, yeah.
Okay.
In other words, legislative grace of, is that our interpretation? Is it our interpretation that those were within the ambit of what they were allowed to do? I think it was.
What's that?
Basically, I think what he wants is, if I understand.
No, not no, Dick originally.
Is it our intention or that law that that sort of thing is covered by doing it that way?
I think in the, in January, people have brought it in before March. There's going to be some people that bring it in in March or February.
Maybe we run something else in the paper again saying reminder this name.
What would you extend it to?
Tim, can you do that?
I ought to talk about that, just to the end of January then?
Yeah, and maybe even the Tim's not here. Maybe we need to get some more word out and maybe put a, public works too, so people.
They all got it.
Yeah, yes and no, though. I, I think to the mayor's point into the future, we don't want to start, if I understand his point.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't want to start a precedent where if we don't remind you, somehow means the law doesn't apply, which of course is not true about anything in the law.
The letter would say the dates changed. This is the effective date. Because of the change is different from history.
So next year, they can't say, well, I didn't get the letter. Well, tough, I didn't get the letter that says, I pay my property taxes, but I do.
Right.
Yeah.
And they say maybe somehow getting word out in the paper or something.
It seems like, it seems like a unique circumstance.
I imagine once.
You don't open bills because you thought, oh, I have to, you know.
And, and the ones that were very involved probably realized it. But that's only a fraction of the landlord.
And that's fair.
That involved, you're not.
And the amounts added up quick when you, I didn't.
Sure. And, but, but next year, the, next year, I'm not going to feel the same way. Because by that point.
No, I would have looked at it on the chair.
You should know.
Yeah. So that seems fair. Is that, do you want us to say that in the meeting or?
Yeah, I, I want some action on it tonight.
Gotcha.
We have no authority to waive any fees without.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay. We have executive still?
No, we have executive session.
Do we, property, do we still? No.
Yeah, he's here.
Don, no, Don Dirks.
Oh, is Don Dirks here? Sorry, wrong Don.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe is the assurance that your identity has protection. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.